All right. Good evening. Welcome to the September 11th, 2024 regular meeting of the Nevada City Council, which we're calling to order. We'll begin with the Nissenon Tribe recognition. Councilmember CC, if you would please.
Yes. We acknowledge that the Nissenon people are still here among us today, though nearly invisible. We understand that we are on the Nissenon land that was never ceded, and the original tribal families have yet to recover from the near genocide of their people. As a resident or visitor in Nissenon land, we support the Nevada City Rancheria Nissenon Tribe in efforts to stabilize their people, as well as their campaign to restore federal recognition.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Klein, Vice Mayor Klein, if you would lead us, if you pledge allegiance.
Sure.
Good recovery.
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, we're gonna do a roll call. If you would, Councilmember Fleming will not be with us tonight, but Madam Deputy Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember CC?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here.
We're present.
Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Now's the time for any agenda modification. We will be pulling item number seven from the consent agenda, which is the second reading of the nuisance ordinance for questions of the city attorney, and also because I expect there's a number of people here who want to comment on that. With that, would you like to make any additional changes to the agenda, pull consent items, or do we have any recusals to announce? Okay, I'm looking for a motion, a second, to adopt the agenda with item seven pulled for separate consideration after the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Who got the motion? Who?
She can have it.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Fernandez, seconded by Councilmember CC. We have a presentation on this incredibly important day in American history of 9/11, a national day of service and remembrance, and we have a proclamation which we will read and then we will present to the chief of police, but it is so much more than that, and this is the process that we use to honor and recognize all who were affected by 9/11. So whereas on September 11th, 2001, the American people endured the worst attack on U.S. soil in our nation's history with courage and heroism, and whereas in response to this tragedy, Americans across the country united together across differences to stand together, to see each other's humanity, to grieve together, to take care of one another, and to do the hard work of rebuilding and uplifting neighborhood by neighborhood. And whereas the Serve America Act passed by Congress and enacted into law on April 21st, 2009, recognized September 11th as an annual national day of service and remembrance, whereas on the anniversary of the September 11th attacks, it is fitting to pay tribute to the strength and resilience of the American people through service to our nation and our communities. And whereas by serving on this national day of service and remembrance, we honor those killed and injured, pay tribute to those who have responded in service and compassion, and honor those who continue to serve our country, including active duty and reserve soldiers and their families, veterans, and first responders. And whereas numerous organizations, including nonprofits, faith-based groups, public agencies, educational institutions, private businesses and individuals, are organizing activities across this nation to observe September 11th as a day of service, and whereas on September 11th, 2024, the City of Nevada City, the Nevada City Chamber of Commerce, and community volunteers will remember September 11th, 2024, through a flag ceremony in Robinson Plaza, and will provide service through the Nevada City Town Beautification Day activities. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Nevada City does hereby proclaim September 11th, 2024, a national day of service and remembrance, and encourages those who live, work, play, and thrive in Nevada City to remember those impacted by the tragedies of September 11th, 2001, and to provide service to community through the town beautification activities or any activity that strengthens the bonds of our neighborhood. I want to go back and read one of these wherethes again because it's so important, and it means so much, and I'm not sure that we're always there anymore, but how we responded to the tragedy, across the country united together across differences to stand together, to see each other's humanity, to grieve together, to take care of one another, and to do the hard work of rebuilding and uplifting neighborhood by neighborhood. That's where we are, that's who we are. I think that's who we need to remember to be. So thank you, Chief. I'm gonna give this to you. Thank you for your service. This morning, we were down at the plaza with a flag ceremony with the chief overseeing that, right here, up there? Right here. Okay, so that's our presentation. Now, we're gonna do public comment, and I want to explain, for those of you who are here for item seven, that comment is taken separately. That's the nuisance ordinance. We begin by public comment on those items that are not on the agenda. So any item that is not on the agenda that you would like to make public comment on, three minutes, please. Ready to go.
Good evening. My name's Don Fraser. I'm a resident in Nevada City. Fourteen people were killed, eighteen were injured, including women and children, in an Israeli airstrike on a UN shelter in a Nozrat camp yesterday. Israeli jets struck a group of people waiting to buy bread outside a bakery in Gaza City. An Israeli strike late Tuesday in a Jabal refugee camp killed nine people, including six women and children. These airstrikes are against a population with no air defense systems, the proverbial fish in a rain barrel. I'm gonna mispronounce this name, but I'm gonna try. Isenar IG, 26 years old, graduated the University of Washington protesting illegal Israeli settlements, was shot in the head by the Israeli army, by an Israeli army sniper. The Israeli army uses snipers all the time. Headshots are their forte. Doctors in Gaza say children shot in the head, see children shot in the head nearly every day. Obviously, these are not deaths from airstrikes. Obviously, these are not Hamas fighters. I'm here once again to ask the Nevada City Council to pass a resolution calling on the United States government to withhold all financial and military assistance to the state of Israel until such time that it institutes a permanent ceasefire in Gaza and the West Bank, and enters into an agreement for a two-state solution and Israeli withdrawal to the pre-1967 borders. If you're wishing more information, you might read the book, The Ethnic Cleansing of Palestine, by Ilan Papé. He's a citizen of Israel, a historian, and he has written extensively on Palestinian expulsion and flight, the result of systemic ethnic cleansing. As human beings, our only real choice is to stand up and speak out. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
Take your time.
Water's good.
Hello. I am Liz, and I am a Nevada County resident. I am here once again to ask for a ceasefire resolution to be put on the agenda. I have talked many times about why this ceasefire is important to me, but I want to know why it isn't more important to everyone else. What would you do if these were your kids, your nieces or nephews? What would you want the world to do if Israel was dropping 2,000-pound dumb bombs on tents in safe zones where your family slept? They did that, by the way. The night before last, Israel dropped 2,000-pound bunker busters on tents in a safe zone on the heads of families sheltering. Why is it so hard for people to speak up? This is so black and white to me, and I feel sorry for anyone who doesn't see it that way. I feel sorry for people who tell themselves that it's okay to stay silent, that think that they're so small or that their voice doesn't matter, and believe speaking up won't make a difference. But every voice does matter, and every great movement was started by one voice. Palestine is not just about Palestinians. Palestine represents exactly what has happened over and over again to marginalized groups. We're supposed to be evolved, we're supposed to be civilized, and yet somehow we're still starving, colonizing, murdering, and raping people and their land. Nothing has changed. We are still just as dirty as when this country was founded. We're just hiding behind Israel as if we're not the ones funding and arming the entire thing. Over 18,000 children have been killed in Gaza in less than one year. This is not a side effect of war, this is extermination. Do you know how many children have been killed in Ukraine as a result of the Russian-Ukraine war that started two and a half years ago? Around 600. Do you know how many children in Israel have been killed since October 7th? 38. And the response to those 38 was to kill over 18,000 children in Gaza in call it self-defense. As I mentioned last time, there are 17,042 citizens in Grass Valley in Nevada City. The number of children murdered by Israel in less than a year is greater than the entire population of Grass Valley and Nevada City combined, and the United States is the reason it continues. If we stopped funding and arming Israel, this would end in weeks, if not days. The amount of ignorance and racism surrounding what's happening is wild. Do you know how often I've been told that I'm the ignorant one for speaking out about a conflict in a place that I've never stepped foot in? Do you know how silly and stupid that statement is? I wasn't around for the genocide of the Native Americans, but I still know it was wrong. I wasn't around for slavery, I also know that was wrong. I wasn't here for the Holocaust, and I've never stepped foot in Germany, and yet somehow I still know that was wrong. Growing up, we are told about these atrocities, and like most people, I've never understood how these things could have happened. Why didn't anyone stop it? How could people do these things to each other? And I always told myself that if I were there, I knew exactly who I would have been and which side of history I would have been on. And that's what I'm doing here, whatever I can during this atrocity. I'm sure you've had similar thoughts about where you would have been and what you would have done. So here we are. So I'll ask you again to put it, please, put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda. Thank you. States do not have a right to exist, people do.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move on. Thank you for that. We are now looking for a motion and a second. Before we take action on the consent calendar, we'll hear any public comment on the consent calendar items only, knowing that we have moved item seven off of the consent calendar. So any public comment on items on the consent agenda, which would be items one through six?
I agree.
All right, seeing none, I am looking for a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item seven.
I move, we approve the consent calendar minus item seven.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Klein, and a second by Councilmember Vice Mayor Klein, and a second by Councilmember Fernandez.
Training.
Fernandez, any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion carries. So consent items, we've got item seven now, which is second reading and consideration of ordinance 2024-04, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Nevada City, State of California, amending Chapter 804 of the City of Nevada City Municipal Code relating to nuisances. City manager.
What would be your project? Would you like a staff report? Would you like questions? What, how can we fulfill your need?
So this will be the, I assume, the public hearing, is it still open?
This is not the public hearing, this is the second reading and adoption of the ordinance.
Adoption of the ordinance. So I, then, we have been well briefed on this. Some of you were here, some of you not. I think, I think I understand why you're here, so what I'm going to do is turn to our city attorney. There has been a lot of information circulated about the nuisance ordinance, some of it which is frankly not accurate. So the questions I have for the city attorney are, one, does this nuisance ordinance provide the opportunity for police officers to enter people's homes and behave in any other way than already exists?
No. This modified ordinance does nothing to increase or afford the City of Nevada City any other authorities than already existed in the current version of the ordinance, and that are afforded to the city in every other city in the state of California.
And the second question I have is, and the placing of liens on property for nuisances that aren't cured, that are required to be cured, taken by the city, and then a lien placed on the property to pay for that? Is that new, or does that already exist as well?
It already exists and has since the formation of the city, and again, as every city in the state of California has the right to do, it's simply moved and shifted in terms of placement in the ordinance.
And I guess my third question, and it might go to the city manager, but we have an existing nuisance in place, which contains about, we concluded about 80% of what's in the current nuisance. Have we placed liens on property, or have we pursued actions against citizens for noncompliance with nuisance, say, in the last year?
Not in the time that I've been here. The city has undergone the process for a hazardous vegetation abatement, which is not under this section, is another section, but did not get to the lien process, worked with the property owner to, they allowed, essentially allowed us to abate the property and then reimbursed us for the costs of it. But that could have led to a lien, that would be the, that would be the process if we had to do the work and couldn't otherwise get the voluntary compliance. But during the time that I've been here, the nuisance ordinance has not been used in any fashion like that.
Thank you. Do other of my colleagues have questions that you would like to ask the attorney or the city manager?
Sure, I'll go. Thanks, Dean. So before this ordinance change is passed, the current standing of things, are the police able to enter someone's home without permission or a warrant?
So nothing in this ordinance, I'll reiterate, nothing in this ordinance changes the authority of the city to enter private property under either consent, and certainly a homeowner could say no, and the city would have to, as any other city would have to do in the state of California, go and ask a judge for permission to enter that. This ordinance does not change that. In fact, some of the changes I mentioned before actually provide the property owners with more due process and more abilities to challenge citations and a formalized process if they disagree about the property conditions or the citations by the city that were not in existence, or that are not in existence in the current version of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
I got just a couple more. In the current version of the ordinance, is there any language involving clotheslines or playground equipment?
I couldn't answer that question. Those might be additions, but I couldn't answer that question at the moment.
Okay.
The direction that was provided by staff was to remove it, so in the current version of the ordinance, as directed by staff, what's here for adoption is with the edits to remove the items that the council directed removed.
Right, okay.
The four items.
Great.
Clarifying question, which is not specifically a legal question, which maybe goes to Sean, the city manager, maybe goes to you. I'm going to ask you, and maybe it's a little sticky, to speculate where you think that concern might come from? Is that, I mean, it's so curious to me, and it could be just misinformation, but is there any reason to believe the way that it's written? The portions that are referenced, are you familiar with the portion that's referenced that folks are so concerned that police should be able to enter a property without a warrant?
I'm familiar with it, and I think it's a complete misreading of this ordinance. And again, this ordinance does nothing to afford the city or its police department any greater powers, and frankly, the language in the ordinance says that the police chief and his department may use any lawful means. And so basically, it's, all that says is that they must comply with the law to enter onto private property.
And the current law is that they need, they need either permission or a warrant to enter a property.
Yeah, I mean, absent perhaps some emergency circumstances, and I'm not going to say that they couldn't enter on, you know, for emergency purposes, but in the code enforcement context, in this nuisance ordinance context, that's how things, we've always operated in the city, and that's how things will continue to operate in the city in terms of seeking voluntary abatement and then permission. And if it rises to the level of, it gets to that level where inspection is needed but not consented to, then we go to an independent judge who evaluates whether the city has the grounds to do that or not, and would hear from the property owner, frankly.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate that. And just to note, I'm sorry, one more thing. To note the four items that were removed, to be more explicit, was clotheslines, playground equipment, furniture items, indoor furniture items, outdoors, and RVs. So I just wanted to be clear on that. Those were removed from the ordinance as things that can be...
What's the word I'm looking for?
Cited.
Yeah, cited, or of issue.
And removed due to public feedback and our own concerns expressed here on the dais two weeks ago. There has, I'm directing this question to Sean. There has been some concern that people, quote, "did not know that this ordinance was coming up." Was there anything unusual about the way this ordinance has proceeded, being presented to the public or discussed by the council?
No, we published in the newspaper a notice of public hearing at least 10 days before the introduction of the item, which we did in this case. It was introduced at the first meeting, you continued it from that first meeting to the next meeting. For first reading, that is unusual. Not that it's bad, it's just, it's not common. So that was an additional meeting of opportunity for you to consider the public's input on it, and then you did that first reading, and then the next step is adoption, which has to come at a second meeting after the first reading, which is what you have before you. So the only thing that is unusual is that we have one additional opportunity for public comment in this case than our normal progression would be.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go ahead and take public comment. Three minutes each at the dais. Go ahead.
Hi there, local nuisance. A few things. First off, I saw, I thank you for removing it from the consent calendar, talk about it further, but I'm curious why it was put on there in the first place, because as we all know, and as you all know, it is definitely among the controversial topics, which the consent is for explicitly non-controversial items, and we've had multiple meetings at this point talking about this with public comment on it. Other thing to add, thank you, Daniela, for listing the things that have been removed. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I didn't hear decorative lights being removed from there, which, okay, it was. That is good to hear, as I think we all love Halloween here. But I've just got to say that I think if there is this level of confusion, I don't know if that would be the right word of it, if you think that there is a different interpretation of this ordinance than the general public thinks about it, I think that's a problem that should hopefully be corrected before the meeting. I think that more information out about it, like, I heard about this, not from looking at the agenda, which I usually do, and it was worded in a pretty negative light on it, which, I'll be honest, I agree with, but I think that there should be just more things put out there about this in general. Because if there is a disconnect between what we think and what you think about just the wording of the ordinance, that's a problem. We should all be on the same page about this. And also about the police entering properties, I read through that line, and I guess it already existed there, but it still came off to me as kind of like they could enter unless someone explicitly told them no, which is, I understand the law isn't how police are able to enter private homes. So I think, I don't know if you are gonna reword it, but to reword it to say, not that, but to just say that code enforcement can't go do anything like that. I would also like to add, while you guys did mention that there have been no liens put on homes, and I don't actually foresee you doing that in the future, all of you could be gone from this, and there could be a completely different staff who really do like putting liens on homes, and if it's not codified saying that they can't do that, then they might. And we shouldn't have, we shouldn't rely on just the good graces of the people who have the power to interpret the law in a way that we all like, but isn't actually written down.
Thank you. We will please refrain from clapping. We just want to get through this and hear everybody. So please, next.
Hi, my name is Jacqueline Jansen, 12 Galena Way. I got here a little late. I just got off work, and when I had read the agenda, it said this was going to be number seven, so I didn't, I missed the beginning of what was said here. So I gotta say, the way this has been set up, it's felt like there wasn't information given. given. When I read, and I actually called the office and had them send me over the information in the packet, it had said that even in, that it was just being read by the title and not by the body of what it was. So even if you did have it here, you were probably not reading the whole ordinance and the corrections on it. What I saw, and I didn't hear all the beginning stuff that you said, but what I saw, it sounded like a bad homeowners' association, is what it sounded like. And, and I have actually had residents come to me that wanted to be here tonight, or would have, but they said they were afraid that if they came and spoke out, that they would be targeted. And that is scary.
Yeah.
That is scary. That is like, if you've got residents that are afraid to speak out, I mean, that's China, that is the old Soviet Union. And so there is not communication that's happening. And we've got Constitution Day coming up this weekend, and I read this, and I'm thinking, how can our town, that we love so much, that we celebrate the Constitution, how can we be doing an ordinance that is saying all these things in it without having people talk about it, without having the public really know about it? It's just felt very disingenuous to me. And it's sad, and it's sad. And I've lived here for a very long time, and so when I have friends that live in the city limits come to me and say that, it's, it's really upsetting and disconcerting. And so I didn't hear the details, like I said, because it seemed like everything came in sooner than when I expected, so I didn't hear the discussion. But I would encourage you strongly to not approve this tonight, to revisit it at a time when people have an opportunity to understand it more fully and be able to respond and speak up.
Thank you, Jacqueline.
I have strong reservations about the nuisance ordinance. When I bought my first house to renovate in Nevada City about 20 years ago, the person I bought it from was a pretty infamous guy by the time, his name was Neil Peterson. He owned the old dump off of Old Downeyville Highway, and the house that I bought was a dump, and he was basically throwing his hands up and saying, "I'm done with Nevada City, it's changed too much, and they won't have people like me around here anymore." And at the time, I didn't really get it, I was just like, I want to fix this house up, I want to make it beautiful for the community. When I read through the nuisance ordinance, I kind of got it, like, having poured my heart and soul into rebuilding homes in the community, it just feels like, not the process of like getting together and figuring out problems, it feels punitive, and it feels like there's less ability for me to know what to expect as, as it comes to enforcement on, on my property. And so I just have strong reservations for those reasons, and I would really like to see us work together to make this community great. I mean, we have zero lot lines, we have all kinds of things that make this community a challenging one to live in and to try and keep up, and so we all just have to kind of do, do our best with that. And I have a strong concern about uneven enforcement, and that the squeaky wheel will be the one that gets heard with relationship to this ordinance, so I don't know, because I've had a difficult time myself tracking down the full document, I've gone online to try and do that, and just haven't had time to come across that. So I'd love to see that published, so that we can go over that, and then also just, I'd love to see some sort of process with the reporting, where if, say, one person comes out and is reporting 15, or 20, or 30 things over and over again, that they themselves might be considered a nuisance. And so just being even-handed with how these things get done.
Thank you. I will echo what the two other people in front of me, oh, first Gail Damski, Prospect
Hill, thank you. I don't see this city having too much transparency, yes, it could have been published in the union, I don't take the union, I haven't taken the union for a long time, I might start fires with it. We all just received a city newsletter, that would be an ideal place, and I don't even know how many people read that. But I would definitely ask you to postpone this until there is enough public citizenship involved. And I don't think it should be voted by you if it does come down to this, I think it should be voted by the people at an election. So it, I just heard about this on and off, it really came to me yesterday, I read it before I went to bed last night, I didn't go to sleep at all, so I'm kind of still wired on that. But this state of California is the wealthiest in our nation, and we are a variety of communities, and we have the poorest, and we have the very wealthiest. I'm very lucky to have been from the Bay Area, where I lived in either Los Alamos Hills or in Marin County, in Ross. Both those places are wonderful. I live up here, which is pretty funky, but I enjoy the less is more. I've learned to criticize but embrace my gifts. I've, I live in a beautiful 1870 house that I love, I'm a slave to it, I'm now paying over $10,000 a year in fire insurance, why don't you work with this, with the state and help us reduce that, so other homeowners can do something about their house? But we are not a gated HOA community. We're not a stage set for tourists to come up and look and see, oh, wow, people live here, looks bad. We're really, we're real people, we live here, we work. You know, I'm retired, but I remember having to work five jobs as a single mother in order to keep my home. I know the woman who owns Kit Kit Dizzy, she's working her tail off, and she adds to this, this city. But when I looked at the median price of household income in comparison to Nevada City, I looked at Belvidere, that roughly is $250,000 a year, that's medium. Los Alamos Hills is the same, Truckee is 107, that's our county. Nevada City, 65.
Thank you.
We're not rich.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, first let me thank you for your service to the community. I think that's amazing what you do, and you, I wouldn't do it for pay, so I'm grateful that you do it on your own, without any pay at all. My name is Bill Drake, I live at 123 Grove Street, I've lived there for 34, 35 years. In some ways, the ordinance, I think, is reasonable, there are certainly things in it that make sense to me, that are important, I don't want things that attract children that are dangerous for them, I don't want any hazardous material that might impact the neighborhood, and of course, I don't want prostitution, but I think that's already illegal, but that's in the ordinance, yeah. I have mixed feelings about this issue, you know, as a property owner, of course, property value is important, you know, someday we might sell our property. On the other hand, I'm much more tolerant of my neighbors and their property and what I see on their property, whether I totally like it or not, than this ordinance would be. One concern I have is the subjectivity of it, just the nature of what public nuisance is, conditions and uses of land that are offensive and annoying to the senses. That's, can be a matter of opinion, for sure. Any condition on property that tends to constitute blight. Whose opinion is it that it constitutes blight? The one that probably concerns me the most is about interior portions, interior portions of buildings or structures that have become unsightly. I have a really hard time with that issue, I'm not sure what that means, I don't think it, in my house, some of the walls are paint chipping off, and it's unsightly, I can't see how that has any concern to anybody outside my house or the neighborhood or the city of Nevada City. So there's some other areas, too, that I have concerns about, but those are some in particular. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Phil, I live in Nevada City, I'm a lawyer, and I kind of want to break my comments into two parts. The first is, it's been already addressed, but it's the transparency issue. I learned about this ordinance, or proposed ordinance, late in the game, I logged on to the public, the city websites, and got a copy of it, and it's different than what is being represented here today in terms of items that are in or items that are out. And so the comments I prepared were directed towards, I guess, sort of some of the patently illegal parts of it that have, it looks like have been removed. But the transparency is really the issue, because as of last, yesterday, I couldn't get a current, or the public portals would not give me a copy of the ordinance that's being discussed here, and so I don't think that this is an appropriate time to pass the ordinance, if that's what's being considered. I think we need to look at what is actually on the table as opposed to, you know, there's the discrepancy of what's publicly available, what you guys are talking about. The other comments, I would just, I join with many of the people who have spoken here today. I think that this, the vagueness about what is objectionable, I read the language of, of the outdoor areas being not up to community standards or detracting from property values, that's extremely vague, I don't think it's enforceable, I don't think it's, should be, should be enforced from the way it's worded. The, the concern, I don't think it was put in this way, but gentrification of Nevada City, that's what this ordinance seems to be geared towards, not towards a, a government purpose, a legitimate government purpose, but towards people who want their property values to go up. And so I urge you not to pass this ordinance tonight, I would like to see the, the actual version of the ordinance, and I'd like that to be publicly available, so everyone's on the same page. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Minkin Nelson, I live on East Broad Street. I just learned about this a couple hours ago, and so I raced on over, trying to gather some knowledge on the way, so I apologize for not being super well-informed. I, of course, read the article, I think that got a lot of people in a tizzy, but there's some very valid points, and I want to, I want to repeat what everyone before me has said, it seems like the public was not notified and doesn't feel comfortable with you guys passing this ordinance. I would request that you wait and release it publicly and give us all a chance to digest it and understand it. Some of the things, when I was perusing through it really quickly, that really stood out under the first section, purpose and intent, it uses the language annoying to the senses and detrimental to community appearance, and that is extremely subjective. This is not like Wildwood, I didn't choose to live in a HOA, and my understanding is that this ordinance goes the whole city, not just the historical part, which is, I would say, overstepping quite greatly, right? Under definitions, under abandoned personal property, the definition is just says non-use. And so if my neighbor doesn't like the statue that I put in my yard, is that just a piece of trash that's unused? If I'm collecting like historical mining material and leaving it in my yard, is that unused trash? I mean, where do we draw this line? And again, it goes back to the subjectiveness of the wording, right? Like, how do you enforce something that's so unclear? Another definition was attractive nuisances, and it talks about hazardous to minors. And I, I want to say, you know, on the top of Broad Street up here, there's a three-foot drop-off on the sidewalk that's completely unlit, and that, to me, seems hazardous when I walk down here with a friend's kid, right? Tarps during periods of rain need to be removed during, not during a period of rain. What does that actually mean? Like, in the wintertime, if I find out I have a leak on my roof, and I tarp it, and then I have a week of clear weather while I wait for a roofing contractor, am I supposed to climb up there in the winter and take the tarp down? Because it's visibly uncomfortable for my neighbors and risk my health? I mean, these are very, very vague, and I think like everyone, and I know you said specifically without lawful entry, but interior of the homes is not anyone else's concern. If I paint my walls chartreuse and graffiti them, well, that's my choice, right? It's not for my neighbors to comment on. All right, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for your time, my name's Charlie, and I'd just like to say a couple things. One, I didn't find out about this until yesterday, you know, and that's not all anybody else's fault, I mean, I'm not always paying attention, but still, I think there should have been more publicity around it. I did read a few articles about it, I read both the existing ordinance and the amendment proposition, proposal, and one of the things that concerned me about one of the articles I read, and this is a quote by the, the attorney, sorry, I don't, don't know how to pronounce his last name, P-U-C-C-I, and it says, "It would be a nightmare, and I don't suggest this for the council to start going through violation by violation, and it's an untenable position to decide what is an acceptable clothesline, what is an acceptable amount of storage, because it's all subjective." So by him saying that it is all subjective, means that this document is so all-encompassing that literally you can almost go to any house and pick and choose which violations to go after. Also, the, from the same article, a quote by the, the mayor that says, "We're not out there hunting it down, and we're not going to be hunting it down. This is actually a far superior document to what we had, because it's much clearer about what those nuisances are." So if you're not going and hunting it down, what does that mean? That means that you can pick and choose who you want to target, and you can pick and choose which properties you want to target, if you're not, if there's no cohesive plan there. So that was very, very concerning to me, that there's this subjective element, and then there's this, oh, we're not going to hunt, hunt these issues down, but we're going to just pick and choose. That's very concerning. And obviously, it also says that this is just a, an update of an existing ordinance, which, yeah, that may be true, but update might be doublespeak for more restriction, because the original document, the nuisances, it fits on about a page and a half, and this new document, it's about five pages of additional stuff, things like vegetation that does not attract rodents, vermin, or insects. What kind of vegetation does not attract an insect? You know what I mean? I mean, come on. And that's, I, you know, I don't know if he took that out or not, but that's, that's still in there. And then just really...
Thank you.
Sorry.
Appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor, just a procedural comment, I noted, I just pulled up from the city's website what is posted and has been posted since the agenda's been posted, it is the current version of the ordinance with the modifications that, that the council gave direction to, and these versions have been posted since the first reading and available to the public, since the first reading of the to the public, since the first reading of council.
My name is Ben Nencini. I've lived here for 51 years, and I was born here. What, I agree with what the First Lady said. If there's no changes, then why do we have another ordinance? It makes no sense. And many things that I have read, and most of the stuff was in the newspaper, also is very draconian, at least. And I don't, and, and this thing about vegetation, I live on the outskirts of the town, and I have deer and foxes and all kinds of things in my yard, and I want them there. So I don't want to go stripping my land of all the trees and vegetation. So I just, I would like to be just left in peace, and I don't think this thing should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, I'm Steve. I live next door.
Hi, Steve.
So I was, I saw the door open and walked in to see what's going on. Didn't really read about it.
Welcome.
That's how I got here, too.
So if your, if your neighbor was doing something wrong, were complaining about it, is that what it is? Or what about parking? I've got four or five police cars parked in front of my store every day, running in their, their engines. We've got to shut our windows in front. Can I complain about that? I don't know. I appreciate all you guys, what you're doing here. I really do. And I'm not here to, to cause any trouble at all, but it's, it's like, for the 10 minutes I've been here, it seems like we're, we're trying to create something where we go out and be Karens and, and look. You don't want to go in my house and see what kind of pictures I have. I mean, I hope you don't. I mean, they're good ones, but, you know, maybe, maybe they're objectable. So I don't know. Generally, I would say, keep our nice little town the way it is, and I'll water the plants every day, and I'll, and I'll sell toys, and I'll do the best I can. And we all do, but it's, we want our town to be the right way. But we don't want to be an enforcement of, like, neighbors, neighbors, neighbors complaining about each other. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Hi, again. I'm Mary Lou Brigham, Heidi Hill neighbor. And I really agree with what a woman said earlier tonight, that I would really like to see in that notice that gets sent to all property owners in Nevada City, more information when these kind of things are coming up. I know I subscribe to the union, but I get it sometimes three papers at a time because, like, I just got last Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday in the mail on Monday. So it's not consistent as far as that, but I do always get the notice that you send out. So thank you for that. And then I did just want to bring up again, as we're talking about all these different nuisances, and I was looking at, like, number 29, blight or health or safety hazard, and I just want to, again, ask for a garbage can to be put on the corner of Pine Street Bridge and Tribulation Trail, where we have many, 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 many people walking on a daily basis. There's now some graffiti there, and there's quite a bit of garbage that we pick up, and we actually hire someone to go down and pick up garbage in the creek area as well. So I would really appreciate your attention to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I hope that we have, you know, more time, like everyone's saying, to, like, review what the exact ordinance is, because it seems like there's a lot more A, B, C, D, E to each one of the, each one of the ordinances here. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lori Beacock. First of all, I want to thank you all for your service, and I appreciate very much what you do, and I love this town. I have been here for 31 years in this town, in the city, well, basically the city limits. And I've been in the county for some, almost 40 years. I lived, I was fortunate enough to live in many places in the Bay Area. One was the Blue Collar area near the Cow Palace, and the other two places were Ross and Belvedere, all very high-end places now, they weren't then. But when I came home from, I feel sorry, but I'm just really shocked. When I came home from a trip yesterday, somebody told me, a friend let me know that something was happening, and I couldn't find it on Facebook, and I called her this evening, and she told me what it was, and I read it. And first of all, I want to acknowledge that I know there are some places where some folks have too much stuff, and sometimes it's not inside their house, okay? I know that. And my thought was always, from the time I built a house right down here, was always to get together a community, and if 40 people got together and paid for a truck and helped some people who have trouble getting rid of things, I don't know. All I think is there should be, this, there was no notice for me, I would expect that I would receive something like this in the mail, not in the newspaper, because I don't take the union. I read it from time to time, but I don't take it. And I don't necessarily go online like a lot of people do. So I'm just hoping that you will give the public a chance. I think in our society right now, the divisiveness and a sense of some of us being out of control, it, it's just not okay. It, it just doesn't feel right, especially now. I feel really sad that we weren't given notice via our mailboxes or, and/or telephone calls, something, but not the newspaper, and not to suppose that each of us reads the online. I think this is a community affair that we all need to understand, and I think we all get, it would be great if we could all give some input, whether you take it or not. So I'm hoping that you will reconsider voting tonight and at least hold a public hearing and maybe some roundtables.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you so much.
Hi, again. How are you today? I'm Benjamin Williams II. I'm advocate for the homeless here and minister here in Nevada City. God, I got a lot to tell you guys, so I'm hoping that we'll all get to talk individually or get down to what's important here, but I only have a few minutes. So all the Nevada City news know about the brick planter next to the theater is a common hanging-out place for both homeless and non-homless alike, right? The planters, the brick planters next to the theater, located on Bridge Street, that's Bridge Street, and we all know there's been as a parking lot, right? And it's been a gathering place since, ever since I've been here, right? Well, one day, someone had put up a gate fence, petition, and very well, poorly done, by the way. I know it's a really boring job. And we were told it was the theater, and everybody was asking me, what's going on? They were really upset about this, you know? And so they asked me to check it out, and I did. And so no one claimed responsibility to the theater. No one had done it. The city then came in, City Public Works came in, cleaned it up, and we did it better than we did, and put bark there. And then we were told by police continuously, immediately and continuously, that we weren't allowed to stay there at all. And so I found out what happened. So it gets harder. This was all prior to June 27th, okay? On June 27th, well, in 1880, there were two fires started in the Chinese district, and as in any catalog you can read out on the street for free, the story. And the next day, the city put an ordinance out that all Chinese were to be removed from Nevada City within 60 days, which worked and didn't work because they came back, but that's good. Anyways, on June 27th of this year, 2024, two mysterious fires were started in homeless camps here, one at Hurstman's Pond, where I lived, and one at Sugarloaf. Before the weekend was done, I had lost eight places and everything I owned. I'd start with the list, but it goes on and on and on in time. So I know something you guys don't know, and I don't know what you guys know. So would you please take the time and have me come talk to you about it?
Thank you for your comments.
And it has to do with Hurstman's Pond in particular.
My name's Peter Kerber. I wanted to wait till the end, go maybe not completely last, but towards the end of the commentary, just to see what folks had to say. What I'm hearing is a lot of confusion, some trepidation, even, even fear concerning this ordinance. Folks don't seem to be well-informed about it, and, yeah, there is a lot of concern. I think just based on that, it would be very inappropriate to pass the ordinance at this time. There's enough concern out there that people need to be more educated before you move forward with this. And I also want to know what the definition of offensive or annoying to the senses is, and who decides that, what that, what that is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Unless we have other comments, we will bring it back to the council. Yes, Councilor Fernandez.
Hi, everybody. Thank you all for your public comment. Thank you for being here. I want to share with you a little bit of my journey of how I got here. You'll indulge me for a moment. About five and a half years ago, six years ago, I was sitting where you guys were sitting, speaking against a statue that was going to be put through, and I found out the night before. And the room was packed, and the statue that was going up was for a former senator named Aaron Sargent. There's the Sargent House at the, you know, midway up Broad Street, and I think it was well-intended to put this statue up of Aaron Sargent, but it was problematic in a number of ways. I sat where you guys are sitting, and I learned a lot about local government in the subsequent weeks and months. And I realized, sitting where you're sitting, that Nevada City is so small, and this body is so attuned to the community that we are able to make change here. And that was really appealing to me, because I had lived in places in the Bay Area, like some of you, that that felt impossible. And so I want to welcome you all here to local government, and I want to share with you a little bit about what we do in our process. I hear that there's fear, and I hear that there's trepidation, and I hear that somebody said, folks are scared to speak out. I, I hate that. I heard the word draconian. I hear that, and I feel that from folks. I do want to say that there is a process here, and our process is about transparency. When we say this is the second reading, this is the second reading, this is, at minimum, the second time that we've addressed this, but as our city manager mentioned earlier, we had an additional time, a third time. And so we are living in a time, I will say, when I got on this council four years ago, a little over four years ago, I did a lot of work of inviting people into this process. We make decisions twice a month, on the second and fourth Wednesdays, that affect the lives of people who live and work in Nevada City. Oftentimes, this room is empty. It is important for this to be an exchange of residents and electeds. We are elected here by you to represent you. I personally invite you to reach out to me, to share your thoughts, your desires, your concerns, with anything. And I want to note that there is an opportunity, there are opportunities for you guys to engage at this at every level. Those two meetings a month, the second and fourth Wednesdays, the agenda for each meeting is posted the previous Friday, and that's always posted, and anything that's not posted on that agenda, X number of hours before our meeting, cannot be discussed here. And so I invite you all to join us in, in reading the agendas and begin to participate. I hate that most people have learned about this in the union. I also am not a regular reader of the union, but again, I invite you all to visit our website, to reach out to us, to engage with our agendas, and come and give public comment. We have a process that is the standard process across the state, across the country, my understanding, on how we pass policy and legislation. And at every point, we allow community engagement. I heard folks say tonight, I just heard about this, I just heard about this, I just heard about this. I hear that. And we have been talking about this for weeks. We're always trying to thread, we're always trying, so we're one of the smallest cities in the entire state. The fact that we have our own police department and our own fire is a miracle because we have one of the smallest budgets. And one of our issues has always been, how do we best communicate with the public? We can always do better at that. I agree with that. We have a small and limited staff. We do not have a communications department. Again, my invitation is to keep up with what we're doing, and please engage. When you show up, this is really meaningful. This is really important. So thank you for that. And then also, I just want to say that, for those of you that maybe don't know this particular iteration of this council, I'm starting a second four-year term, and I've been with some of these folks for four years, and then some of them for two years. This is the most community-engaged and forward-thinking council, in my understanding, that this city has had in a long time. And don't believe me because I tell you, I invite you to do your research and read up on us and look at stuff that we've done and our record. And to go to this ordinance, one of the things that, four years ago, we started to embark on was the fact that we wanted to update this city. I used to make a joke that Nevada City was operating on Windows 98, or 95. Turns out it was operating on Windows 98 when we got here. And so something that we started doing is going through all of our ordinances. Ordinances haven't been, many of them have not been updated for decades and decades and decades, right? And so for us, this is bringing us into the present, knowing what we know now. Eighty percent of this ordinance was already existing. The 20% that is new is probably less than 20% now because we removed those four items plus the holiday lights, which ends up being five items, right? And so my understanding is that the rest of that... And so, my understanding is that the rest of that percentage that we have added is us threading the needle to do the best we can to balance public safety with homeowners' rights and homeowners' autonomy. And I see head shaking, but that is my truth, and that is what we're doing here. So, again, I'm glad you're all here. I hope you stay. I hope you continue to engage, and you learn a bit more about this process, and all the points of engagement that are available to you. Thanks for that lengthy time.
That's why she was such a good mayor.
We don't, the comments are done. We work a process.
No questions.
No questions. Go ahead.
Like Daniella said, we've been dealing with this for a while. We had the very first reading. There were folks in the room who had issues. We had a lot of the same issues. I think that was the meeting where the lights were taken off, I think. And it came back to us the following meeting. There were some folks in the room. I just want to make it as clear as possible that we don't do anything behind closed doors in a smoke-filled room. All of these meetings are public. And I understand if you can't make it to all of them, but they're online afterwards. They're on the city's YouTube channel. All of this stuff is available. At the next meeting, more people came and spoke. We had our own thoughts on it, and that's when we removed those other items to bring it back in its current form. I heard from a lot of people today specifically with a lot of concerns, and I think a lot of these concerns are very valid, and some of these concerns are based on the first version that we saw and immediately changed. So, am I allowed to ask for a show of hands?
Sure.
I'm curious about who's here because they read the ordinance in its current form that's been posted on the website. I read it from the same website you read it. I don't get a special version of this. I see what you see online. So, who's read the actual ordinance? Great. You read the ordinance posted on the website currently? Awesome.
On Saturday.
Yep, that was it then. And who read something in the union and came out for that? Those are different things. And I don't know how we're going to proceed tonight at all. I'm one voice. But if we're talking about this at another meeting, and we're not done talking about it tonight, I hope everybody reads the actual ordinance and not something that they read elsewhere, so we can all be on the same page, so to speak, and be talking about the same thing.
Thank you, councilmember.
We consider ordinances all the time, and it's well-known to us how this process works. I know that it isn't always familiar with the citizenry, but I think that you're showing up here shows that you are engaged and interested in that, and I urge you to continue that. Education and compliance will beat enforcement every time. That's true of all of our ordinances. It was true of our vegetation ordinance, which is just now being, the public is being educated about. We don't want to enforce the vegetation ordinance. We want people to understand how it works and voluntarily comply. And we see that with our business ordinances as well. We get pushback from businesses who want neon signs in their windows, or sandwich board signs outside of their businesses. But by educating them on the purpose of the ordinance, we get compliance. And you will see that there are no neon signs in the historic district anymore. The same will be true of this ordinance. Once you understand its purpose, which we hope we have explained tonight, and once you understand its limitations, which I hope you got from our attorney, you will understand that this is not a threat. The people are not under threat from this city council. We are here to help make the city what you already believe it to be, which is one of the best small towns in the state and the country.
Thank you, councilmember. I don't have a lot to say. I do.
No way.
I do want to say that I think most of us live here in Nevada City because we accept the uniqueness of Nevada City, our character and our qualities that make us the community that we are. Yet, we somehow cannot accept that this body might govern different than much of the world believes government functions. We're not here to do anything to you, but we're here to do everything with you. That is what we do here. The idea that five of us are capable of representing all of you, you know, citizen democracy, is ludicrous. We can't do that. And we know that. And that's why we need your participation. That's why we need to hear from you. Councilmember Fernandez was very clear. We are in a process of trying to modernize our city. We know what we need to preserve in the way of our history, but we also know that if we do not remain current with laws and standards around codes and safety, and every year, there's a great old Will Rogers quote, "Everybody's safe because Congress is in recess." But every year, we get new laws, new regulations that we have to comply with as a city. So, we try to update those. Our intention is not to do harm in our city. Our intention is, the idea that we could control you is crazy. I'm disturbed that people feel fear from us, because you don't have to. You do not have to. And that's where I am. It's, you don't have to fight with us, you do not have to fear us, but please work with us. So, I need to know how we would like to proceed from here.
I just wonder if Sean or Dean, if you guys want to say anything in respect to any of the comments you heard, to soothe any worries that you might have heard.
For example, if anyone would like to speak to the definition of annoying to the senses, attractive nuisances, the sort of vegetation piece that does not attract insects, just any of that stuff that was kind of brought up.
Well, broadly, the vegetation part is brief, because we have a whole nother section on defensible space and vegetation management. So, this is trying to narrowly tailor those things that are nuisances separate and apart from, so not necessarily the threat of wildfire, although it does list that as a potential. That's why that section is somewhat briefer than the others. No one's going to like this answer. The reality of that definition of what a nuisance is comes from the state of California. It's both in civil law and the penal code lists that definition. It's where it comes from. It's why we use it, because we have to reference what the state says a nuisance is, whether or not you like those words, and I'm not saying that I do.
And I don't.
That's what, that's why, that's why that language is there, is in reference to what the state, both in the civil code and the penal code, references as a nuisance. And I'm guessing their definition is older than ours, and ours is pretty old. So, yeah, that's where those come from. If I might, Councilmember CC.
So, there is case law behind those words.
Those are existing, yeah, like penal code 370, civil code 3479. Those are like laws on, not like, those are laws on the books.
We can't just say, you know, wearing red on Thursdays is a nuisance.
I think you could say anything you want. I don't think that would be a nuisance, so you couldn't put it into our law as a nuisance, but you could say it. As far as the access to the council, and I appreciate everything that's said, for those of you in the audience, my name's Sean Grayson, I'm the city manager. The five councilmembers, the vice mayor alluded to this, they get the exact same information that you get at the exact same time. There's no, I can't send them anything special. There's rules under what's called the Brown Act. And so, I appreciate what everyone said tonight. It's my job to, wherever possible, funnel your requests and input and comments to the council, so they can make the best decisions possible. As the vice mayor noted, and as the councilmembers noted, we've had three meetings now with public comments on these things. Most of you weren't at the previous two. Sounds like you just heard about it now. You know, my office is upstairs. If you're out front, and you throw a rock at the window, that one's mine. So, hopefully, pick the one that's open, so that you don't break the glass, because it's 1937 original glass. But, you know, I'm available. Check us out online on our website. If you use the internet, you can, there's, at the upper left-hand corner, it says, "Create a website account." You can select what things you want to be notified about. Take a chance when you come to the farmer's market on Saturday to walk by City Hall. There's a box right out front that lists the items that are posted on our agenda. Walk in front, talk to Donna or Taylor at the police department will be happy to get you a copy of the agenda, show it to you on an iPad, so we don't burn off too much paper to show what it is. Or if there's other ways we can get you information, please let me know. That is, you know, the process. I hear what you're saying, and I'm talking way too much for the council, but it's, that is my job, to get your input as much as possible, in whatever flavor you want, to these five folks who can't get anything special to what that is. So, I know that's a lot of comment, but I really, it is important that, on this issue or any other future issue, you know, we're staffs available to you. Like I said, my name's Sean. You can have my cellphone if you want it. You can have the police chief's cellphone. We're pretty open. It's a city of 3,000, so we're, you know, we'd rather hear these comments, you know, whenever possible.
Thank you. Did you have anything?
Just briefly, on the enforcement perspective, I mean, as the city attorney, I deal with this all the time and every single day. And of course, our first priority is collaboration and education, and getting people to agree and working with options in terms of if they're having a difficult time maintaining properties or complying with our codes. That certainly is, especially in Nevada City, is the first and foremost perspective on that. Unfortunately, these codes are necessary, because unlike probably 99%, 100% of people in this room, these codes are built for the 10% or the 1%, whatever your population size is, that is not willing to cooperate. And the city has to have some enforcement mechanism for that 1%. But I can tell you collaboratively, from a staff's perspective, that, and we just did this, you know, today, in terms of what public resources can we pull together, and if we need help, and sometimes there are not 50 community members who are willing to step in and help somebody who really needs help. And so, we have to employ additional resources to protect health and safety, so that's all.
Thank you. So, by way of advancing this.
Can I, may I ask a clarifying question? I want to understand better, and I want the folks here to understand better, I'm still learning four-plus years in. We have a culture now in Nevada City, and I think Josh alluded to this as well, we moved to a community policing model. We studied a number of years ago. Gary and I facilitated a process with the community in several different ways, through community forums and surveys. And we learned that people want to know their police officers, and they wanted their police officers to know us as a community. And so, we hired Chief Os, he came in to implement a community policing model. I think it's been growing great. You're doing great work. I hear you, Dean, that you're saying that our sort of practice as a city is to educate and build relationships and work together. Is there any way to codify that? Because I'm thinking about times in which this council might look different, and the methods used might not be community or relationally oriented, and maybe it's, you know, literal, like, here's the law, and we're going to do something about it. Is it standard, or is there a way to codify or add within the ordinance that sort of culture that we value around enforcement?
So, unfortunately, not in the ordinance itself. Ordinances create laws, and the law has to be fairly enforceable and fairly defensible, and understand how to defend it from the community's perspective. You can't really have the gray area in there. Now, could the council give staff direction to engage in a public education campaign as to what that ordinance means? And doesn't mean, sure. Could the council give, and does staff prioritize what are the needs and, on a priority basis, what are the real big concerns right now in this community that are popping up? There's tools in here to address those. That doesn't mean that the city has one code enforcement officer. So, you know, it does take a limited focus in terms of defining what the issues are that the council and the public have, and that we have the tools and able to address those concerns. So, the answer to your question is, there really is not in the ordinance perspective, because it is black-letter law, and that's what you create is the law. In terms of policy direction, and how to educate the public and things of that nature, those are staff direction type of items.
So, this is really, what I'm talking about is culture of the city versus the law.
Yeah, and you really don't build in culture into an ordinance that creates, you know, the dos and don'ts.
I wish we could as well.
Right.
So, by way, I believe I need to clear this by calling for a motion for approval, to see if we have a motion.
I move that we approve the ordinance. I think we need a vote on it, to see where we stand.
Looking for a second. Without a second?
You can take a second.
I'll second it. So, we have a motion by Councilmember CC to approve it, a motion by Mayor Peterson to second it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember CC?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
The part of me that has been in this process and knows protocol, and knows that we've already given this one extra reading than we would any other ordinance, wants to vote yes. And I think we need to make allowance for our friends who are arriving and have some thoughts and feelings and concerns, even if it is last-minute no.
So, it's a no vote?
It's a no vote.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Vice Mayor Klein? Do I get to talk about the different parts of me, too?
As long as there's only two.
I've got so many parts, I'm multifaceted. I echo my colleagues' comments about having been in this process and having seen the stuff that we didn't approve of, and removed those parts, and generally being happy with the state of the ordinance now. I also have parts of me that feel terrible, that Doug's missing out on all the fun. And these folks who feel like this is coming as a surprise, surprise to them, I can understand that frustration as well. I am happy to punt this to the next meeting, but no further than that, so that we can get an ordinance on the books. So, no.
And I'm voting no, and not for the reasons that my colleagues expressed, but that I expressed in the last meeting, that many of you were not here. I have a deep background in this work. I understand why the ordinance exists. I understand why it was written. I was opposed to the changes that were made last time. It is not being characterized fairly in the press, and there's a lot of nuance here. And that's why I voted no before, and I vote no tonight. So, I am looking for an alternative motion or approach. I mean, I hear that you would like to carry it to another meeting, but I'm not sure what you would expect to be different because of that.
Could we direct staff to form a press release of some kind to counteract, as the mayor suggested misinformation? I've had people sending me messages today, saying, "This thing that you're voting on is going to have the police chief busting through people's doors because he doesn't like playground equipment outside." That's a true thing, that someone said.
No, it's not a true thing, but it was.
That's an untrue thing.
It's true that it was said.
My story is true, their comment was fiction. And I said, "The ordinance doesn't mention playground equipment, and it doesn't grant the police any extra constitutional powers." So, I think an education component should absolutely happen. And I'm happy, if that's something we're able to direct staff to do, and I assume the union and Ubinet would get the word out, maybe Sean goes on KNCO, because, yeah, it is upsetting that people are afraid. And having been with this ordinance update, again, we already have a nuisance ordinance we've all been living under and not noticing in particular, and this is an update of that. I think it's probably worthwhile to do the education piece and then vote. That's my thought.
Up to the council, kind of broadly. Up to the council, kind of broadly, your options give me very clear direction of any rewording to come back because I can't change words without, you know, direction. And it doesn't sound like that's probably going to fit the bill. Do something like what you're talking about, which is education, which is a, which is great, but it's a one-way street. So we're just providing information? If that, if that, that's fine, but that would mean that you're asking me to bring back the ordinance as we have this evening for future consideration after education. The third prong would be the one that's more work for me, but that's okay. I love my job.
Mostly.
Would be if you wanted to have a separate engagement opportunity for the community to come and the council doesn't, doesn't lend itself an opportunity for questions and answers and things like that as much as a, a committee would. That committee wouldn't be writing the law for sure, but it would be a two-way communication opportunity. So those are the, kind of the three. There's infinitely more, but those are the three common ones. I'd be happy to take direction on any of those if you would like.
I like the second one.
The committee?
Yeah.
Education?
Yeah, the education and outreach. To explain the ordinance and its limitations, that's important to the concerned people.
Sure.
I think it's important to note too, the difference between the previous ordinance and any additions that have been made. Because the previous ordinance has been for decades, right? That's on the books. So I'm interested in differentiating between the new pieces. And I do think the education piece, as Sean mentioned, you know, is, is a one-way street. Now that we have new folks in the room that are engaging at this later stage, as Vice Mayor invited you, I do invite everyone to read the ordinance. I do invite everyone to engage via email, via access to our city manager, Chief of Police, to any concerns that exist within that ordinance. And I'm open to that going to committee, whatever committee the mayor deems fit for that.
What committees are you on? Well, I, I have, my concern is that, you know, we can educate, we can send it out, we can ask for comments back, but that I don't think addresses many of the concerns of the folks that are here. Some of you don't want it at all. You've been very clear about that. There are very good reasons why we should have that. I'm curious about what the process might be that created a give and take that could get this to a level that was acceptable to the community. And I'm not sure what that looks like. It would be something like your third option where we would, we have a variety of, of council committees that take up a number of items. Perhaps this would be good for the economic development.
Would love to do that with Adam.
And so we have two people here. We could put together a special meeting and workshop and process and, and invite people and have a more open exchange and then adjust accordingly.
Yeah, and I think, you know, pump the brakes. Like we don't need to, we don't need to pass this in the second meeting in September. So yeah, I, I support that. I think, Adam, do you think we could find a time to create another special meeting?
Yes, I do.
So that's what we're going to do, just so I, just going to be really clear about this, so we're as clear as well as you are clear. There will be a notification placed on the city website that there will be a special meeting of the Economic Development Committee to take up the nuisance ordinance and receive public comment. And this would be, this would be an exchange where we could hear specifically what works for you, what does not.
And again, for the Economic and Community Development Committee, it has its own space on the website. When you go to the website, under the tab of government, you have city council and all of our committees. And is it three days before the meeting?
The easiest is the circle that says agenda in minutes and then they're all in alphabetical order.
That's even better.
And our regular meetings are posted 72 hours in advance at least. Special meetings only require 24 hours, but we endeavor to post them all on Friday before the meeting. So generally at least 72 hours.
And so that agenda and an accompanying packet. And so the agenda is just like the numbered items and then the packet is the context for all of it. It's like the history, the actual ordinance, it's like all of it. It's like the homework. It's like the bulk of it. So yeah, I invite you guys, you guys to engage with that and keep up. And this really is a give and take, y'all. There is a resident responsibility and I invite you to keep up with us and keep coming back because this really does make us stronger. We're here to serve all of you and when you show up, we're better able to understand what your needs are. So thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Just a procedural note, if this is going to committee, because I don't staff committees, that my guess is this process, as well as hearing from the public, all you want obviously, is going to boil down to probably either eliminating things from the ordinance that you feel you want to eliminate, which you can do. I would caution that modifying the language of some of those terms, because each of those terms has been legally defined and is, is worded in a way that protects not only the city's ability to enforce, but residents' right to defend those. And so I'd be careful in creating modifications of those as opposed to which is a city do we want to see in there and which are conditions we don't want to see in the community.
Yep. Thank you for that caution. And I would add that, that every item that comes to this council comes through our esteemed council's hands for review. And that is his job to protect us all from ourselves largely, but from changes in language. So with that, we have adequate direction? Did you?
Yes, and we will, hopefully this accounts for everybody in the room and then those that maybe couldn't be here tonight. We'll do a press release. It'll be in the union and on Ubinet. It'll be on our website. It'll be, we'll do a notice of the meeting when we do the press release in the box outside so anybody could see that. And then if on your way out, you want to grab my email or my cellphone number, I'd be happy to send individual notice to anybody that doesn't want to partake in any of those other means.
Very good. So thank you. Thank you all for your participation. We have listened and we are taking action and we will continue to listen. So thank you for your, your time and your commitment. And I'm with Councilmember Fernandez. Keep coming back. We want you here. Thank you. And I'm an old man, I'm going to call it a bio break here.
Thank you all.
Okay, so we are, okay. Get past that one. Item eight, conduct consideration of the Bayou Land Trust's special event street closure request for the 2024 Trail or Treat event on October 26, 2024. Take it away, Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Bayou Land Trust has done a number of events in the city in the past. This one's not new for them, but it is new coming to Nevada City. So Annette, who has presented before you previously on land trust events, will show you what a trail or treat event is, and then I will cap it off what she's done.
Lot less divisive than the closed lines and backyards. So yes, I'm here. I'm Annette. I'm with representing the Bayou Land Trust, and we are hosting our annual Trail or Treat. We've been doing it in Grass Valley on Wolf Creek Trail. We wanted to move it to Nevada City. So I don't know if you're probably mostly familiar with the land trust here, but we maintain, manage and maintain and build some trails locally. And one of the trails we maintain through a city contract is Little Deer Creek Trail that goes from Stone House to Pioneer Park. And so we are asking to do this event on that trail. And we usually have around 300 families come in costume. So it's a Halloween event. We're going to set up in Pioneer Park. We've been working with Dawn to make sure that that like we're able to like work with all the other events that are happening and just make sure that it's a safe and just really well-planned event. So we'll set up in Pioneer Park. The families come out in costume. There's a costume contest. They take photos. There's activities. We have craft activities, popcorn and cider. And then they walk the trail. They get candy and costumes and they walk back. It's staff, board, volunteers all come out to support the event. It's a really great, fun time. We, it is a free event. We ask people to RSVP so we know who's coming. We can get them all the information. But yeah, it is free for anybody in all ages. It's not just for, for kids.
October 26th, which is Saturday, three to five.
Three to five.
And the website where they can sign up?
They can sign up at B Y L T dot org.
Awesome. And everything else is in the staff report. The reason this is before you is because it's even though they've done other events in the city, which we'll generally bring to you on consent and the year over year, this is a new one. So bring it to the council. So hopefully they stay in Nevada City. Not that we don't like our partners down the hill, but I'd like to keep them here. And then next year it'll probably be on consent for you.
Great, thanks. So let's, we'll go ahead and take any public comment on this item? All right. See, no public comment. Bring it back to the council.
I can't believe this isn't more controversial. It sounds adorable.
He is pretty cute.
I, I, I walk that trail all the time. In fact, I live at the other end of it. But I can comment on this because it's on the trail, not in the park. I'm only commenting on the trail part. I'd be interested to see how it works because it's, it's an interesting trail. It's tight in there and, and I'm sure you can handle it. I was just been looking at it, trying to figure out how it's going to work. So I'll be really interested to see how it goes. Happy to have it, though. So I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we accept this.
I second.
I think I'll beat you on that one. So first by Councilmember Klein, second, first by Councilmember C.C., second by Vice Mayor Klein. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. Really looking forward to appreciate it.
Are you mad at us that we didn't have you before the last one?
No, I'm great.
Okay.
I actually was quite interesting to sit down on that, and you all do amazing work.
Yeah, it's really interesting. Thank you. All right. So item nine, consideration of a professional services agreement with R3 Consulting Group Incorporated, an amount not to exceed $72,000 for solid waste coordination services.
Thank you. I'm going to invite Caitlin from R3 to join us at the table up here. Good evening. In November of 2020, the California Department of Resources Recycling and Recovery, which we call CalRecycle because it's much easier to pronounce, finalized regulations that you hear about commonly called SB 1383. There's long been requirements of the city with regard to solid waste. Over the years, they've added regulations with regard to plastics and other recycling as well as green waste recycling for commercial businesses and for our multifamily housing. Those have been incorporated in our, our concession agreement, our franchise agreement with Waste Management. Over time, SB 1383 has not been. It's a pretty heavy lift to work through, but what the council and staff have already done is you adopted ordinance 202211, which created a new solid waste chapter in our municipal code that was required to address this unfunded mandate and all of these unfunded mandates. We completed a low population waiver, which does not, it allows us to not enforce the collection of some things under SB 1383, but essentially everything else we have to do that's in that law. You approved an MOU with the county for their health department to do inspections that are required under this because they're already in the facilities that these inspections are done in largely our food generators, restaurants and wholesale food generators. We, you approved a contract for us to secure feedstock for a cogeneration facility to meet the city's recovered organic waste procurement obligations. And then we've collaborated with CalRecycle. We were lucky enough to be one of the first cities to have a compliance inspection by what they call JACE, which is the new CalRecycle COPs, an enforcement division that can take action against cities. So we're one of the first 15 cities to go through there. They've been very gracious in working with us on that. But I would say that the complexity and the time it takes to do this work in any other jurisdiction would have at least a full-time staff member. And so what we're proposing instead is that we would contract with R3. Essentially, they would become an arm of city staff for solid waste. The new contract with Waste Management, which comes up June of 2025, analyzing rates of variety of other items. But we would have normally issued a request for qualifications or a request for proposals for this. The reason we didn't essentially a sole service is because the criteria for that release would have been a firm that works in this field, has experience in the county and has worked with waste management. Well, R3 is the firm that works with Grass Valley and the county with waste management. So that pretty much leaves them. They also happen to be a very reputable firm. Their staff's been great to work with on other allied issues that happen related SB 1383 implementation that they've worked with the county in Grass Valley and included us in. And so what you have before you tonight, if you read through and you looked at the cost sheet, there's some options. We're asking you to do all of the options for year one, which is a $90,000 year one. The reason why it says $72,000 is because year one won't entirely be in this fiscal year. So the balance will be in next appropriated next fiscal year's budget, but we are asking that you approve the entirety of the contract for year one. We'll be asking that you do the year two after that. The reason why it's large or more expensive in year one is because there's a lot to do to set up what they're going to do. But essentially, they're going to take over all the functions for compliance and reporting or the great majority of them. They're also going to set up for inspections of our facilities, but in the fashion that they could train our staff to do them on the go forward. So, so that's why you see a lower second year rate. So I, we do anticipate offsetting the city's costs for these items by including the costs in the future franchise agreement with Waste Management, which is a normal function and will be part of R3's work as they go forward, not only justifying, but making transparent how that works. Franchise agreement, money exchange historically has not been real obvious. They'll make it real obvious to the council and to the community of where that money goes back and forth with the organization. So with that, Caitlin and I are here to answer any questions. I would assume probably of her as the subject matter expert and a better speaker than me, but I would recommend you approve the agreement.
Okay. Let's take public comment on this. Any public comment on this item? Okay, none. Councilmembers, comments?
I have a question. Will R3 be engaged in any enforcement activities?
No. So essentially, nobody that we contract with can do the enforcement. So we can have Waste Management, for example, do waste stream inspections, which they do with cameras on their truck and find people that are non-compliant. They can charge them fees because you've signed an agreement with Waste Management related to your pickup. But when we're talking about these kind of activities, you know, they'll do, they'll build the reports. They'll say who is a self-hauler or non-compliant or has to do these things. If it got to enforcement, that has to be the city in doing that work.
So it's mostly paperwork?
I would say there's paperwork, but we're also planning on figuring out how to do some of the site visits. So there will be some onsite understanding of what those processes will need to look like.
And the city staff would be swamped and have to do this all the time, all day, every day, if we didn't hire someone else?
Yeah, right now it's primarily me. In the, in the last 12 months, it's, you know, 400-ish hours of work. It's, it's close to a week to put together what they call the year, the electronic annual report. And then, you know, because they seem to change this computer software every year or the way it looks, it's another, you know, day to put it in. But that's just the report of what you were supposed to do throughout the year. Fortunately for folks like Caitlin and R3, they do this all the time. So I'm sure they do it much faster than I do.
Thank you, state legislature.
Does, would R3, would your team be negotiating at all with Waste Management in terms of customers' rates, anything like that?
We will participate in the negotiations with Waste Management. We haven't fully scoped out what exactly those needs will be. So we'll work with Sean in those negotiations and basically support the scope we're looking for there.
Oh, we love support.
Can I ask a clarifying question on something she said? How do we establish those needs?
So it'll start out with a process where we kind of identify both parties' essential deal points and we will kind of track through and negotiate through all of that. I think that through our initial gap assessment, that is the kind of how we kick off this whole thing and why the timing is quite good. So we can understand what gaps there are in the franchise agreement. Another great timing for this franchise fee assessment that we're doing that will really understand the mechanics of all the, the costs as well.
Great, thank you.
Good, good. I just wanted to call on my past over experience, Vice Mayor. But
Wait, you have it experienced in this?
I do, I do. I used to have two full positions, City of Salinas. And mine was like quarter of my time and other staff, but I had a full-time position doing nothing but solid waste. It is that complex. It is that challenging. And we also contracted with R3 and on a number of, on a number, for a number of reasons, and found them to be really good to work with. They are the experts in the field and these are the people you want at the table with you when you're negotiating with solid waste people. So I heartily support that, and I'll be looking for a motion on this.
I move that we approve the agreement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Vice Mayor Klein. Roll call, please.
Councilmember C.C.?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And then Mayor Peterson?
Yes. Great. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Consideration and acceptance of funds and approval, the initiation of a public art mural project at the County of Nevada owned facility at 120 East Broad Street, Nevada City. That's not a three-digit address. Nevada City referred to the project to the Nevada City Public Arts Commission and for implementation and authorized city manager to execute any contracts or related documents.
The building will not vote.
Yes, that is, it's a five-digit address, but it's owned by the county. So they kept their five-digit address. It also has a North Bloomfield address at the post office, which is strange, but has nothing to do with what I'm talking about this evening. So the county has offered funds to us to facilitate a public art mural on that building. The building is used a little bit. It's mostly for their maintenance folks to bring things in and out of, but it's not really a utilized building. But it is at the gateway to the river on 49. As you come through town, it's a cool opportunity to put something there to make it look not like an old gray barn. That is what it is today. So essentially, if you approve this this evening, what we'll do is we'll bring the project back to the Public Arts Commission to create a process where we will essentially be the, we'll be running the applicant for the county, on behalf of the county. Essentially, they're the owner and now we're becoming the, the artist selector and hirer and implementer.
The patron in the art world.
Yes. So I know none of those were words that I said, the, and then er, but so it's, but we'll take it the same way we would anybody else's project. So except for it'll go to the Public Arts Commission to outline what they want it to be, how we'll select the artists, what the criteria will be. It'll certainly have some component of the artist having to work with either, you know, inexperienced muralists that are looking to, you know, grow into that field or youth artists or something like that. So it's not just a, we're paying somebody, but we're also paying artists to expand art and art capacity within the community. So I, I think that will be very exciting. Once that's done, that'll go to the Planning Commission, just like any other public art project would, and they'll review the building and where it will be for its consistency, architectural review and the like. Once that's done, then we'll go out to bid for the artists, select them because we'll be coming up on winter and then spring, although we will award this likely in January in the new year. It probably won't be, you know, painting until late spring of 2025. But the county is putting in just a little under $10,000 to do it. We have $5,000 earmarked for the project in this year's budget under public arts funding to support that. And then, yeah, that was the last thing I was going to say. So with that, we would appreciate your support to accept the funds. Well, the mechanism will be an encroachment permit with the county. So you don't have to approve any agreement or MOU like you normally would have an agreement between the board supervisors and the council. In this case, it's at the staff level through an encroachment permit to the county, much like we do an encroachment permit for a parklet. They're giving us an encroachment permit to paint their building. So that will be the, the process. And so tonight you're accepting the funds and authorizing the project initiation to go back to the Public Arts Commission.
Thank you. Public comment? See, no public comment? I recommend a red man mural. It's an old joke.
How old?
How old?
Old around here.
Explain it and we'll laugh more.
Red man has, is a rapper.
No, not bad.
But that's half the people at home are confused now.
Yeah, that's, is it a, is it like an old chewing tobacco or something?
It is. Throughout this country, red man advertisements were on barns and there's still hundreds of them out there. I'm sorry, I digressed terribly. Councilmember Fernandez?
Probably problematic.
I wonder if that's a problematic name at this point? I think the Nissan would not accept that. You know, Sean, this is, this is my favorite part about local government. When you like have an idea and you see it through and it takes a while and that's okay. This came out of, I think, a brainstorming session of like, where can we put art in Nevada City? Hey, how about that old building? Let's meet with the county. Let's stand on the corner with Supervisor Hall and the CEO, CEO Lehman and some other folks and talk about the possibility of putting a mural here. This is exciting. I'm excited it's here and we're moving into the next phase. I'm excited that the county is partnering with us and trusts us to, to take these next steps. And I'm just super excited at this process to learn about how the Public Arts Commission will unfold this project and then eventually to see what becomes on the side of that rusty old building.
Thank you.
Did the county hand this to us because we have a Public Arts Commission and they don't or?
Yes. So we, we have a ability to implement the process through our Public Arts Commission in a way that they wouldn't be able to. They, we are part of the documentation and the conditions that we have to work with is it has to be compliant with their public arts policy, which is great because our policy is consistent with their policy.
Yeah.
But yes, it was, it was, not that they couldn't have done it on their own. Obviously they have much more robust capabilities than us, but I think that the CEO and the District One Supervisor Hall both saw that, you know, we have a new Public Arts Commission, you know, some momentum in this space and it would be a great opportunity to continue to partner with the county and the city.
That's awesome. I'm crazy about a Public Arts Commission. So this is, this seems like a really great project and as you say, the gateway to the river, et cetera. That's great.
Great.
That's actually the line that, that, that pulled Supervisor Hall in as we spoke about it is that it was the gateway to the river.
Cool. I have a question, which I hope will clarify things, which isn't directly related to the three points of the issue. But in the agreement, it says staff will present the project after the Public Arts Commission approval to the Nevada City Planning Commission for design review. Since the Public Arts Commission has already determined a theme and the county has the right of refusal on the final art, what is it that the Planning Commission does?
They're going to exercise their architectural review obligation under the public art ordinance. So the same as what was required when the Onyx mural got approved, went through the Public Arts Commission, they reviewed the art and made a recommendation that the Planning Commission approve the project with their approval of the art essentially. Goes to the Planning Commission. They don't really look at the art. They look at the building, where it's going on the building, if there's any lighting, if there's any landscape changes, if there's any, you know, impacts on driveways, right aways, you know, everything that the Planning Commission already does. And then they're the final approving body at that point. So they say, we take the Public Art Commission's recommendation, we approve everything else that's in here, put those two together, and now you have an approved public art project.
Okay. So would they exercise judgment about whether or not it fits the locale or the neighborhood?
Not the art itself, but how it is framed on the building. So, so in other words, if, you know, the proposal was to, you know, add two 50-foot, you know, swinging barn doors off the side of it to paint the mural, those barn doors, they might say, that's not consistent with the architecture of the building. But the actual mural that would go on those barn doors is the Public Arts Commission.
Got it. So it's Public Arts Commission content and Planning Commission structure?
Yeah, compatibility with, with, it's the architectural review standard, which is compatibility with
That's the word I was looking for.
With the structure and its surroundings.
Okay.
Is this the first time Nevada City's Planning Commission is going to have that sort of say over a building with a five-digit address?
Well, it's in the city, but yes, because the Onyx has a three-digit address.
Interesting. We're slowly going to take over the whole county. Just, this is the first step.
World domination is next. So looking for a motion?
I would like to accept the funds and approve the project initiation.
I would love to second that.
So motion by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Vice Mayor Klein. So, motion by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Vice Mayor Klein. Roll call.
Councilmember CC?
With those clarifications, yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yes.
And Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Item 11, consideration award of a construction contract to Sierra Engineers in amount not to exceed $80,609. Award of a construction contract to Truckee Trails Foundation in amount not to exceed $12,878. Authorize a project contingency of 3%, not to exceed $2,804.61. And authorize the city manager to execute any contracts or related documents, all for the Sugarloaf Trail project. Wow, where'd you guys come from? Go forth.
Good evening, Council. Dawn Zidonis, Parks and Recreation Manager. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background, and then Brian will talk details about the contract. So, I'm not sure how long, this process has been going on for a long time, so we wanted to kind of just back up and do a little bit of history. So, it has been in the city's general plan since 1986 that they wanted to acquire Sugarloaf Mountain and keep it as green space around the city. And in 2011, the city was able to purchase the property. And part of the goal and vision was that there are many potential trail connections from that property, including, you know, getting to the Rude Center, which then leads to Hirschman's, and potentially further in the future, Pines to Mines. So, and then in 2015, the land trust, the Bayou Land Trust, presented the city with a trail proposal idea. And the city kind of wanted to step back. I don't, I don't remember exactly the order of everything, but we stepped back for a moment and needed to evaluate, like, what needed to be included. So, in 2016, a master plan was adopted to guide the trail development process and make sure that the vision that everyone had was similar. We went through, after that, we went through public workshops regarding the trail. We had lots of meetings with neighbors, and then we had to do CECO, which took us quite a while due to staffing limitations, but we got it done. And that was part of our grant application, which we were awarded. But while we were waiting for that grant application to find out if we were gonna get awarded, the land trust did what they could to, you know, with volunteers, to kind of get that trail going and start really trying to see the vision for the trail. So, and then we found out that more clearing was going to be needed than we originally anticipated. The Manzanita didn't behave exactly how we wanted it to. Go figure. Nature. So, our public works crew has actually been doing a lot of the clearing on Sugarloaf, and then, you know, it got too warm, and we were entering into fire season, so that has stopped. But now, we're ready to kind of finish up the clearing and move forward with the actual trail construction. So, I'll send it over to Brian for the contract.
So, I helped with requests for bids for Parks and Rec and other departments. And so, we took the plans and details and all the specifications that Bayou Land Trust provided, and then put it out to bid on the, on the public advertising exchanges for Contractors Association, and then Central Valley has another Contractors Association exchange. So, we had quite a few attendees at the pre-bid meeting, and a lot of interest. And then, as always, some of the bidders drop out. And, but we still got five bids, and several of them were local bids. And so, when we received the bids, we, we look, we look at the documents, make sure they followed the instructions that were described at the pre-bid meeting, and also that are described in the document itself. It tells you what forms are needed. And, and then we open the bids publicly and then review them. And so, one of the, one of the bids was determined to be irregular, just because the way the form was filled out, there was no unit prices provided. So, we considered that bid to be non-responsive, but all the other bids had all the forms correctly. And so, we're recommending an award to the lowest responsive, responsible bidder for each segment. And the reason we split it into segments is to allow opportunities for more bidders to be involved with the project. So, we broke it into several segments. So, that's, that's how it's presented. It's broken into segments, and then we're recommending the low bidder for each segment.
Great. Before we go to public comment, I was going to ask our attorney if he would comment on what a non-responsive bid is and how that process plays out.
So, this was bid out, my understanding, as a regular public works contract, or public works project. As such, we are limited to the very specific rules provided under the Public Contracting Code. We don't have discretion to modify those requirements, and those requirements are designed to create an even playing field for all bidders. Once we receive that bid, there's a very specific process. This, this process was followed as we do on any other public works project. Staff goes through and makes an additional determination in terms of what was specifically required in the bid package for the submitters to submit, and made a determination that, as we do on every bid, whether the document was, or the bid was responsive or not responsive, that is one of the grounds to reject a bid. And that determination was made that there was a, and this has legal significance, a consequential omission, as opposed to an inconsequential omission. And so, as such, the bid was rejected. And that's generally, bids are rejected under generally two grounds, not responsive bids, meaning that they did not comply with what the, a very clear requirement of the bid. And then, the second category is not responsible bidders, but that's not an issue here. And all of these provisions are provided by the Public Contracting Code, and again, provide very little discretion in terms of what the city's obligations are in terms of public works bidding process.
Thank you. And Brian, was the pre-bid meeting a requirement for bidding, or not?
No, it was non-mandatory.
Non-mandatory. Thank you. All right. We'll go ahead and take public comment on this. Go ahead, you're up.
Hi there. My name is Josh. I have quite a bit of concern with this issue. I am just trying to get clarity. I'm, so obviously, we're in a city that doesn't have a huge budget. And I was just curious exactly how the lowest bidder misfiled the paperwork to not be included in this bid. And also, so that's one thing I was curious about, because, I'm just, yeah, just curious about that, because, yeah, if maybe Mr. Pucci, sorry, is that how you, maybe you could dive into that a little bit, or if there's anyone here who has looked at all the bids, and then we could maybe dive in a little bit, and just, I just would love to figure out what went wrong with the smallest bid, because it's just confusing to me. And kind of just dive into that a little bit before moving forward. That would mean a lot to me, and just thank you all so much for the time.
Okay. We'll take it up in a moment.
Okay, for sure. And then, I wrote down a couple things. So, so I have a really cool vision for Nevada City. I would, I love trails. I love hiking. I love mountain biking. And I would love to see like a community-led effort to build more trails, and with locals here as well. And just more things like the suspension bridge, which we all love. And if there's plans for that, I would just love to see them come to life. And, you know, lots of cool more trails, and just get people, and even bike paths, and like access to get out in nature. And so, I was, I had two questions. One, are there plans, are there any plans to build more things like that, proposals from locals here? And secondly, if there's anything stopping those plans from going forward, what are they? And, yeah, that's, that's it for me. But I just, just had a couple questions, just wanted to get everything out in the open. And if any of those could be answered today, that would just mean a lot to me. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah.
Scared you.
Other comments on this item?
My name is Rebecca. I am living in Penn Valley currently, but I have hiked the Sugarloaf Trail often. And, can you guys hear me?
I can.
I guess, also curious about why the lowest bid wasn't selected, and just happen to have like a little bit more information on that, just being that the same bidder, the same person behind that bid would have been the same person to do the tribute trail, mostly with volunteer work. So, just being mindful that we work in a small community. I believe a lot of hiking trails are planned a long time in advance with a bunch of different contributors. But, yeah, I heard you say something about, like, it wasn't quite sin of omission or commission. It was like something was lacking from the document. And you said in previous bids that that wasn't like a necessarily negative issue, but in this case it was? Was that what you said? Was the clarity that I was asking for?
We'll get to your questions.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. I just have one question in regards to the lowest bidders for city projects. What happens if someone does city project, and it is, you know, there's some issues with it? How does that factor in those folks being able to continue to do city projects? Because I think there's been some projects that have been quite questionable. And it was my understanding, I don't want to get, name names or whatever, that some particular contractors were not going to be reused by the city, but then again, they were reused by the city, and there's been some issues with the projects. So, I just wondered what the process is in terms of selecting the lowest bidder in relation to their previous work with the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Riley. I just had some questions or concerns, I guess, about the bidding process. And I understand that maybe some of the, well, I overheard basically the dilemma of maybe some of the parts of the contract not being completely fulfilled. And my question is basically why there isn't a system or a method to maybe reach back out and correct those little issues, especially in this situation, because I know that the same person that built the tribute trail down here is the same person that got denied from building the trail up there. And it seems like the sort of thing, especially when you're considering the price, that the city should be advocating for, and really reaching out and trying to reward, if that makes sense, or at least attach to, especially, I don't know how many of the bidders are local, but I think it's maybe two, taking that person into account as well. And with a small community, it seems like we should be chasing after people that are developing those sorts of things, or at least not being withheld to strict paperwork guidelines, when it seems like an easy correction with a phone call or an email to be like, "Oh, hey, this small little section of this massive grant isn't fulfilled." It seems like that'd be a great avenue for maybe reaching out, so that the city is able to get the best reward, especially when it's using a huge amount of public, or maybe not a huge amount, but a significant portion of public funds. And that's a pretty significant project up on Sugarloaf. We're all gonna enjoy it and go on it. It seems like we should, it seems like the sort of thing that we would want to get the best deal, or the most optimal deal, and it being blocked by simple paperwork seems like a weird reason to just completely sideline possibly the best option for making that happen. So, I'd love to know if there's avenues of reaching back out, or if maybe that process could be justified in the future, so that if someone's denied for simple little things, especially if they're a local person, we could reach back out so that we can all enjoy the best things for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on this? Okay, we're gonna bring it back. Brian, would you like to comment?
Sure.
Like you might want to.
Yeah, I can answer some of the questions. So, when, when we bid projects like this, we bid by the unit price and quantities, because lengths of the trail can change, a lot of things can change. And so, we want unit, unit price, so that it's paid by, by unit price, like the bridge that's being constructed as 200-bit items, and we track all those unit.
Could you tell me what unit price means, please?
So, that would be price per foot for trail, or, or price per square foot for wall. It's like, so you're paying a price per quantity, and it's measured, it's field-measured. So, when we do our invoicing, it's all based on actual installed trail, you know, that's measured. So, it's, and so, this, this particular bid didn't have the, the listing of the unit prices. So, there would be no way to pay...
Lowest bid, meaning this particular bid.
Yeah, the lowest bid didn't have, didn't have those prices listed. So, so that was the reason that it was irregular. Every, every other bid had it.
And without the unit prices, you could not compare the bids?
Right, because we, we actually, the low price, we do, do the math to calculate and make sure that it calculates quantity times unit price to verify that they, that the price that they wrote as their total is correct, because unit price governs over the total on a bid. So, yeah, it's just apples-to-apples comparison between bids, and we weren't able to do that in this case.
I understand. And it's, so, I also understand, I believe, that once a bid submitted, a bid is submitted, it's the responsibility of the contractor to submit a complete bid, and that we have no responsibility to reach out, because the bids are open, and after everybody's submitted, it's a deadline, that there's no going back on that if it's an incomplete bid. Is that correct?
Yeah, we, the envelopes are sealed, and then at 3:00 on bid opening day, or whatever time we say on the bid, that's when envelopes are open. It's done publicly, and there's a sign-in sheet, everybody that's in the room. There's several contractors in the room typically. And we open the bids publicly, and they're, they're read out loud, and then, and then they're, they're, you can't negotiate with, with people.
And they're reviewed for completion at that point as well?
Afterwards is when we typically review them for completion.
Is the review done publicly?
No, the review's done by staff, and then it's not, it's not awarded until it's presented to you as city council.
And I would just, just to kind of clarify what he was just explaining, like, when we're sitting in that room doing a bid opening, any of the people that bid on it can be there. It's not like just certain people can be there. And, and so, all of the amounts are said out loud, what everyone bid. So, to answer the question about why can't they just make the correction, well, they have information now that not everybody had when they were putting their bid together. And so, it's kind of an unfair advantage. They could, you know, tweak things to be, to make it still so they win.
Well, I have no, no education in this, in this world, or in any world. But let me ask you this. The different amount... The different amounts for the different segments between bidders just vary wildly. Some amounts are a lot higher than others. Why does that happen?
Well, that, that happens for various reasons. In this, in this case, it happens to be two contractors that do road construction and not, not necessarily trail construction. So, you know, I was glad to get their bids, because it's good to get as many bids as possible. But I think that perhaps was a reason for the high numbers.
Mobilization.
From a procedural perspective, and you can see the reason that, I mean, and it's very funky. If you're not involved in public works bidding projects, it's a different world. And the thing that, you know, the secrecy and the sealed envelopes, and everybody's in the same room at the same time, there's a reason that.
Are there cigars?
People that, no, people that bid on public works projects know what they're doing and know the process. And you can imagine that if they are consequential omissions, that some from a tactical perspective, this is a very small contract, if we were talking about millions of dollars, some from a tactical perspective might choose to withhold numbers so that they could see and hear what some of the other bids were, and then say, let me give me another crack at the apple, and put in numbers that actually work for this bid. So there is a, there is a reason for this process, even though you're, most people in the world are not familiar with it.
Yeah, wow.
Unless you're Gary.
I have a question.
Sure.
To, to switch gears a little bit, from the woman on Pine Street and the trail there, she asked a question a little bit about, is there a sort of pathway or a practice of the city to consider and/or prioritize or de-prioritize people who have done projects before that maybe the city or the community were unhappy with? How does that play into this? Or does it?
If they're, if they're licensed and there's not any legal reason for rejecting their bids, we typically wouldn't reject a bid unless, and so we haven't. Historically, we haven't rejected bids based on a contractor's reputation or whatever.
How about past performance on city projects? And that was the, that was the specific question?
Yeah.
Is if a contractor failed with this before, do we rehire them?
So from a legal perspective, although it's not relevant here tonight, because none of these bids were rejected, the second category that I gave you in terms of our ability to reject bids is for a responsible bidder, somebody that we deem not a responsible bidder. The categories under not responsible bidder would be trustworthiness, quality, fitness to perform, capacity and experience. So I believe that a significant problem in the past with awarded contracts could justify a denial on a responsible bidder. That then triggers a kind of a due process hearing for them, where they get to come in and say, I am a responsible bidder, and here's why. So there is a process for that.
Awesome, thank you.
I would add to that too, just for information. We, like when we did the tennis court lights, the lowest bidder was quite a bit lower, and we weren't familiar with them, so we don't know their trustworthiness and all that. So we still had to do the due diligence of calling references and talking with them, like, how is it that you're able to do this so much lower than everyone else?
I noticed that the contract requires that all work be paid, which is not surprising. But is it possible to build a trail entirely on volunteer effort?
Or partially.
Or partially on volunteer effort?
Sure, we would typically do a different type of process, request for proposal. This, you know, this was a public works.
I see, I see, I see. That's, that's, that's what, because that's the California Labor Code, right?
Yeah, so this is state funding, RTP funding, and it's a public works project. Both of those trigger prevailing wage. So even if you used volunteers, you'd have to pay them prevailing wage, which is, sounds weird, I know. But, but that doesn't negate the possibility, like Brian said, that you could have other avenues to do work with volunteers.
And we have, in fact.
Good, because the Tribute Trail is beautiful. And as I understand, a great deal of it was volunteer work. I think we should tap into that again.
And we had, even Sugarloaf has some volunteer work done on it, with, through the land trust volunteers, so, yeah.
And just for clarity, what does that process look like, and why would we, how could we initiate a process like that versus the public works process?
This one's based on funding, so.
Yeah.
It's RTP, regional trails funding, so it's money coming from the state in the form of a grant, which obligates us to follow all the rules for procurement and makes it a public works project by definition. You know, if the city were to have the next Sugarloaf Mountain, when we annexed the rest of the county, as the vice mayor suggested, that, and we contemplated a trail in, you know, up by the Five Mile House, for example, and we said, hey, we want to build this trail, we want to use volunteerism, and we're not going to get grants for it, we could build it around that kind of activity. And that would largely be with nonprofit partners like Barrywood Land Trusts, or Bonk, or others that are in that space.
Allison, if you're watching at home, we're not going to annex the county.
No, wink. So a couple of comments, I have an enormous amount of experience with this. If we did not do the project with this bid process, there would be no money to pay anyone for anything. We are bound to this process. It is an absolute dot your i's, cross your t's process. And it must be conducted that way because, one, because it's the law, which we are required to do, but it is also set up, as was required, was mentioned earlier, to protect both the participants in the bidding process, so we get the fairest possible bid, and eliminate the potential for corruption in bidding processes, and it's also designed to protect the public interest and funding. There are many, many people that are likely less competent than you that have mastered this process. If you want to be in a public works process and go after these kinds of bids, you need to learn the process and follow the law. There's no, there's really no choice in that. It is not ours to, we cannot override it, we cannot do it if that level of money is involved. And as I said, in particular in this case, given the source of fundings, funding, we have no choice but to go in that direction, or there would be no funding. So that's where we are. And if you want to go forward with it, you know, it's great, there's, I went online, downloaded or looked at, California League of Cities has got a great document on how to participate in public bidding processes. As I said, I've worked with many, many contractors, or I'm certain are less competent than you, that have figured this process out. So that would be my recommendation. But as it stands now, you know, you've done great work, but it's not going to happen because of the way this works. If you want to do it in the future, figure it out, because we'd love to have you back. So that's where we are.
And we'll, Mr. Mayor, we'll get contact information for Don and me to, the folks that spoke there regarding the questions about, are there other trail initiatives? There's a, there's a regional trail working group that we actually participate with, and the county does. There's a number of other things out there, the Pints of Mines Trail is the biggest one, but there's several other things, so we'll be happy to share that information with those folks and see if they want to be involved in those ones as well.
All right, looking for a motion.
I move.
I move to all that.
I move that we award the contracts, authorize the contingency, and authorize the city manager to execute related documents.
Thank you, second.
Didn't have it on my screen.
Motion by Councilmember Fernandez, second by Councilmember Cici. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cici?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Klein?
Yeah.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation.
Thank you, thank you all, I learned a lot.
Yeah.
All right, so reports and future agenda items, and we're going to go to our city manager first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the consent calendar this evening, you approved the cancellation of the October 9th council meeting, making our next meeting in front of the public October 23rd. So for the folks that were here tonight for the first time, we'll.
Take your conversations out, please, we got work to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. For those that were joining us for the first time and might be watching this back on YouTube to see what was said, not October 9th, it'll be October 2030, the next opportunity. Nevada Street Bridge is largely out of the creek. It looked like they were making a wooden. Yeah, it looked like they were making a wooden bridge for a period of time, because that's how they frame up to do concrete, but it's, it's moving along quickly there on what we would refer to as a critical path now towards completion, so, but please, yeah, come take a look, there's lots of great places to view it from Broad Street. Our fee waiver program's still active, come by City Hall and get your business license renewed, or a sign application, or a variety of other things. And then lastly, the Seven Hills Field, that project that you awarded, the rehab of that field, the grading is complete, so there's no grass out there now. And we anticipate that to be materially complete with sod on the ground by Halloween. It won't be usable at that point, because it needs to grow in period until next spring, but it'll look remarkable by that time. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Hey, thanks. Who would like to go?
Vice Mayor Klein and I will be hosting a public workshop.
Yeah, clearly.
A couple of them. The one that I'm talking about is already scheduled. It is Tuesday, October 21st at 6:00 PM, and we are looking at the problems and opportunities with our short-term rental ordinance, and if and how, we'd like to modify or change that to meet the current needs of our community as it pertains to short-term rentals. We invite folks to come and join us. We're excited to have the conversation, to hear where people are, to understand the needs of the community on that. We'll be making sure that we put that out through all the channels and send out invites soon.
Press release will go out tomorrow.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Home Hardening Demo House is underway. That started, I think it was on the 31st. It really looks good, you can already see progress, you see new screening on the lower vents, you can see vegetation has been cut back. I would like to see a big billboard with a checklist outside that house, and each time something is done, a big checkmark, so that people can see what we plan to do and what's been done so far.
Billboard?
Well, it'll be temporary.
Oh, okay.
We hope.
Evan, you're watching at home, we'll talk tomorrow.
And the Fire Safety Advisory Committee meets on my birthday next week, so, cool.
Happy birthday, next Thursday, also planning commission.
Cake with no candles.
No candles on my cake, we violate the fire ordinance.
Complete?
I, that's it.
Vice Mayor Klein, anything?
Now, we have special meetings coming up, me and Daniela, looking forward to those. Appreciate all of you. Can't believe Doug missed this, he must be kicking himself.
I did text him and let him know that we saved the ordinance for him.
He'll appreciate that.
So, a couple things. Had the opportunity last week with our city manager to attend the Sustainability Conference at Martis Camp, hosted by Supervisor Bullock and Hall. I thought it was a great conference. It was, it was fascinating, because it was really people who are trying to do the work, and people are trying to figure out how to support them in doing the work. So it was a really dynamic back and forth about needs and progress, a lot of forest management focuses on watershed. I thought it was a really, a really good opportunity. Happy this morning to join the chief on the 9/11 ceremony out there, and then I went up with everybody up to the cemetery, Boot Hill up on the cemetery, where we pretty much watched staff do a good job. And I stood around with, I've been around a long time, I knew to stand around with a tool in my hand to at least look good. But you know, day of service. For photos, yeah. But it was good work, and I appreciated that we did that. Looking forward to Constitution Day Parade. What, what president are you this year?
Not anyone.
Truman still?
I'm no president at all this year.
Wow.
Who is Kennedy, and why are you not, JFK?
Thank you.
Who is that? Who is that?
I don't know.
Shame on them.
I don't know, the gentleman's.
Did you do something wrong? You get kicked out, or, never mind.
No, I'm just overbooked.
I make a good Lincoln.
I've said that since day one. I also suggested Daniela would be a great George Washington.
So we're going to wrap this up.
That's General George Washington to you.
It seemed like I had something, something else, but at any rate, I think things are working great with, oh, I was going to say, I was driving down by the bridge, and there was a guy sweeping up dirt and pushing it back on the site. And I just wanted to acknowledge that, that that's happening, and I also want to acknowledge the help that Sean guided in addressing neighborhood concerns on a, on a construction site on Wyoming Street, a lot of concerned folks, and we were able to look at it and get it inspected and get corrections made. So the process worked very well. So thank you for that.
I move that we adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor?
I.